It wasn't me.
Because John spilled his coffee.
Welcome councillor Dervix.
Okay, I'm back on my iPad.
Oh lovely.
The, the, uh, the new computer that was working this morning won't connect to the internet at the moment, so. I don't know what happened.
Okay.
I've only had five minutes out of meetings since about nine o'clock, so.
Chair, I think, I think we're now live and ready to start when you are. Okay, thank you. So, welcome to Staff and Pensions Committee. Today is obviously Monday, the 8th of June. The first item on the agenda is apologies. Do I have any apologies, Sarah? I'm assuming I'm going to come to you or Isabel.
I haven't received any, Chair.
Thank you Isabel. Second item on the agenda is members disclosures of pecuniary and non pecuniary interests. Are there any? Would anybody like to raise their hands on the iPads just for openness and transparency? If there, I, as there are no hands raised, I'll take it that there are none?
Can I just point out that I don't have hands raised facility on either of these machines?
Okay councillor Dervix, if you would just like to raise your hand, then I'll, then I'll know you want to come in.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Second item on the agenda is Covid-19 administration impact actions. Chris, Chris, I believe you're going to be taking this report. If you can introduce yourself for openness and transparency and for anybody listening, that would be great. Thanks, Chris. Over to you and I shall mute while you're speaking.
Thanks very much. I'm Chris Norton, a finance manager within Warwickshire County Council with responsibility for the Pension Fund and some other parts of finance. This report provides an update on the impact of Covid on the running of the Pension Fund. It includes an assessment of the risks overall, including investments and administration side of the fund. Investments being how we deal with the money that we hold and administration being how we deal with all the information we hold on members and how we pay them when they're receiving their pensions. This report then goes on to just focus on the administration side. We have reviewed the investment side earlier on today in the Investment Subcommittee. So just a few things I would highlight here. If you look at page 14 of section 2.1 of the report, you can see a table which gives you a summary of the risk register for the fund and it just shows on the right-hand side how risks have changed and the three things that have increased the most according due to Covid are volatility, volatility of the markets, the impact on investments short and long term and also the risk on employer contributions not being paid. So the investment side we talked about this morning, but the employer contributions is as much an administration function as an investments issue. And that's an area where we need to pay particular attention and the risk we think is significantly higher. A few other things just to highlight are as far as operations are concerned, the fund has been able to continue all of its critical operations. So we've been able to continue physically running the pensions payroll, collecting contributions from employers, placing money when, when we've got capital costs on the investment side. So the major operations have all continued. Staff have been able to work from home and communicate, coordinate and function effectively on the administration side and on the investment side. The other thing briefly to mention is we, as well as Covid being an issue that's a feature to deal with, we've just come through the corporate restructure. So a number of posts are starting to fill up within the pensions teams. We have a new pensions and investments manager, Victoria Boffitt, who's, who's in on, on this meeting. We have a new admin lead who will be starting over the summer on the administration side. We've been filling in team leader posts and pension officer posts. So that's all been going very well and we've resourced and staffed up better than we were before. Those are the main things I was going to highlight from this report. Be happy to take any comments or questions.
Thank you, Chris. Can I open up to councillors for any observations and comments, please? Just from my personal point of view, it's good to see that the actual team is working from home and are all safe and well, Chris, and that actually we've been, we've got the functionality to carry on business as usual. So that from my point of view is really good to know. As for the report itself, I think it's a comprehensive report and it does actually give us all the information that we need to know. If there are no, no questions from councillors and just for openness and transparency, if you, the recommendation is that the Staff and Pensions Committee notes and comments on the report. If there are no comments, can I ask if you do not object or if you don't, that's right, if you don't, if you do object, raise your hand. As there are no raised hands, we're doing it back to front. As there's no raised hands, just for openness, the recommendation is approved as set out for item two. Thank you. Can we now move on to item three, which is the Armed Services Support and Foster Friendly Employer? Rich Thomas, nice to see you. Would you like to introduce yourself, please, and talk us into the report? Many thanks.
Hello, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Rich Thomas. I have responsibility for HR and organisational development strategy and commissioning at Warwickshire County Council. Just by way of a bit of background, councillors will be aware that these items were considered back in December of last year, at which point firstly, some recommendations were made in terms of armed service support, and this is primarily for employees of Warwickshire County Council who are military reservists. And secondly, the paper that was put forward in, in December of 2019 regarding foster friendly employer was essentially to provide support for employees to become foster carers. So both of these items have been considered previously. In relation to the first item, which is the Armed Services Support, the recommendation that we are seeking endorsement of today is essentially to provide continuity of service for those employees who are called up to fulfil their duty as military reservists. And the second proposal is in relation to foster friendly employer is essentially to provide ongoing support to those employees who become foster friendly employers by allowing them five days of additional annual leave each year for the purposes of training and keeping their skills up to date. So that's the basis of the, of the two recommendations today that are, are being put to this committee.
Thank you, Rich. Do we have any questions from councillors for Rich?
I think councillor Stevens would like to speak, Chair.
Councillor Stevens, would you like to take your mute button off?
Stupid thing keeps switching on. John had that trouble this morning, I think, that every time he spoke, his mute button went on. But that as it may, it goes without saying that I fully support the Armed Forces' recommendation. It is part of our commitment to the Armed Forces Military Covenant, which of course we signed up for all those years ago. And it's a very sound paper which really outlines everything, our commitments to the Armed Forces Covenant and those in the Armed Forces. And I think in particular, over the recent pandemic, how helpful the Armed Forces have been in helping the county council get off the ground and get, get the distribution organised. So I, I think it's a yes, yes. And a quick commercial, it is indeed Armed Forces Week at the end of June, to which I hope we'll be flying the flag as normal, although we won't go through the ceremony with the Lord Lieutenant and what have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any further questions or commercials, inverted commas? Okay, welcome Bill. Nice to see you join us.
I'd been sitting in what I thought was waiting for everybody else and then I've had to come back in again, so I don't know.
You're in the wrong committee room, were you?
Excellent, technology.
That's, that's right, yes.
Okay.
I got kicked out of the sitting room, so I had to come to my office.
Okay, team. Would anybody, if anybody doesn't object to the report, to the recommendations I set out, please raise your hands. In which case, I can't see any raised hands, in which case, can we approve, I approve or the recommendations are approved as set out in items one and two of the agenda, item three. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, for your contribution too.
Chair, I just saw councillor Horner raise a hand. Just to be clear, there were no objections to that report and everyone was in favour, is that correct?
That's correct. I raised my hand because I thought I was voting.
Thank you, that's helpful clarification.
Thank you. Okay, can we now move on to item four, Warwickshire Fire and Rescue Service Health and Safety Wellbeing Annual Report 2019-20. And I believe Ben, you're going to take this report for us.
I am, yeah. Afternoon, Chair, afternoon councillors. Yes, my name's Ben Brook. I'm the Assistant Chief Fire Officer within Warwickshire Fire and Rescue Service and I'll present today the Health, Safety and Wellbeing Annual Report for 2019-20. Warwickshire Fire and Rescue Service has to meet the requirements set out in several pieces of legislation, including the Fire and Rescue Services Act 2004, the Fire and Rescue National Framework, the Health and Safety Work Act, National Operational Guidance and the Health and Safety Framework for Operational Environments. So it's quite stringent, the health and safety we have to comply with. And I'm pleased to report that over the last 12 months, based on the dedication and commitment of the team and all members of staff, that performance has been very high, as outlined in the report, over the past 12 months. And this is particularly impressive with the circumstances surrounding the coronavirus and the new activities that the Fire and Rescue Service have been undertaking to support the communities of Warwickshire. And that has required an increased number of risk assessments to ensure that we make sure we undertake those activities safely and effectively. During this time period as well, we've had a real focus on the wellbeing of our staff as well. The report highlights the fact that we've embedded hospital-to-home activities and that we have also embedded the training of staff in relation to analytical risk assessments. And also we've done some work around fire contaminants on people's PPE and clothing and we've done some work around that on a local and national basis. The report also highlights the fact that in response to the tragic Grenfell incident, Warwickshire Fire and Rescue Service have responded to this. We've had an action plan, but we've importantly procured a new turntable ladder that can reach up to 32 metres to protect the communities of Warwickshire. In relation to the performance as set out in the report, personal injuries are slightly up in the last 12 months, but it is in line with a three-year trend. There's been an increase in vehicle incidents, but 10 of these on investigation were not due to drivers within Warwickshire Fire and Rescue Service. And there's been no increase in violence or aggression towards crews. And again, I'm very pleased to report the fact that there have been no major incidents, major injuries during the reporting period. Wellbeing and fitness, as I've said, remain an absolute focus for us and we're pleased to report that 97% of staff have passed their fitness assessments during the last 12 months as well. We've also now got wellbeing ambassadors across the service and there's an occupational health newsletter that goes out regularly to make sure our staff are, are well. So finally, I'd just like to say a massive thank you to all the teams in Warwickshire Fire and Rescue Service and across the county council for their work over the past 12 months to deliver such high performance in relation to the health, safety and wellbeing in such challenging times. And welcome, any questions?
Thank you, Ben. I'd like to echo those thanks also. There's been a tremendous amount of work that's been carried out by fire and rescue and, you know, they've taken on board other additional tasks, you know, attached to their day job and, and, you know, we're really, really proud of our fire and, fire and safety crew, obviously. I'm particularly happy to read about the wellbeing and the occupational health department really working alongside fire and rescue and also the newsletter that goes in. Obviously wellbeing is a real top high priority, especially at this time of uncertainty. So for me, that's a, a big bonus in, in the report and I'm really pleased to read about it. Can I just open up to other councillors? Are there any questions?
Councillor Dervix indicated first, Chair, I think.
Thank you, Sarah. And then I'll, followed by John Horner and then councillor Stevens. Thank you. Oh, and then we'll get in Bill as well. Councillor Dervix, if you would like to go first?
Okay, thank you. Like to reiterate what you've already said first. But then I have a question on page 35. It's about violence and aggression. I think I know what the answer to the question is and I know what I, I hope it would be. And that that is violence in addition towards our staff. It's not, there's no violence or aggression between staff there because there's nothing in the report that says otherwise. But I assume that that is all public towards our staff. And I think that if this is a public report, it might be well worth making sure that it is clear that the, the aggression is external rather than within. You know, it, it, there have been instances historically elsewhere, so, you know, it's, it's worth mentioning.
Yeah, absolutely councillor, just for clarity, absolutely. This is around our crews potentially being subject to abuse or, or things being thrown at them whilst they're undertaking their duties. It certainly isn't describing any activities that we, you know, would be outside of the values of our staff against each other.
That, that, that is the answer that I would expect, but I think it, it needs to be explicit because, you know, somebody out there will pick it up. They always do. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dervix. John, councillor Horner, would you like to go next?
Yeah, thanks very much. On the vehicle incidents, you said, I think 10 were not, not, not our fault from 32, giving 22 for this year. What was the number, what were the numbers the previous years? You have 23 and 29 in total. Do you know what the, what the no-fault ones were?
Yeah, I'll have to come back to you on, on the figures from previously councillor, I'm afraid. I haven't got those figures to hand. A lot of the vehicle collisions that we do have tend to be slow speed manoeuvring. So it is when vehicles are reversing slowly and they, they hit something. So we have policies in place around that, around having pilots, making sure someone's observing at the back and side of vehicles when we are reversing. But most of them will be those type of, of, of instance.
Have we had any incidents where they, they've sort of not been able to get down a street and have, bonk, hit a, hit a parked car or something due to bad parking? Or is that not an issue?
Yeah, no, that is an issue across, across the Fire and Rescue Service nationally. We, we regularly publicise via Twitter and other social media forums and, and through our communications about people parking effectively. And I know during the Covid-19, when perhaps more people are at home than normal, we have had those sort of issues generally in, in built-up urban type towns, you know, rather than rural areas. But yes, absolutely, that, that has been an issue. But generally that won't cause collisions for us. It just restricts our performance and getting to the instance within our risk-based attendance standards.
Yeah, okay, thanks. That's my questions.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Horner. Bob Stevens, would you like to ask your questions and don't forget to take your mute button off?
I've done that already, see.
Lovely.
Saying the words out of my mouth. Yeah, do these figures include retained firefighters as well as full-time, or is it just the full-time force? And secondly, and it's really just a comment, I'm, I'm interested to see that the PTSD figures are fairly reasonable because it's one of those things that people tend to associate solely with the Armed Forces rather than the fire and the police and the ambulance, all of whom go through terrific traumas. And of course, the NHS staff at the moment that are working in hospitals.
Yeah, thanks councillor. So the, the health and safety report there covers all of our staff. So we definitely look at everyone who works within Warwickshire County Council and the fire specifics. So this is the fire specific part of the county council and it covers all of employees, that's on call. And, and whole-time members of staff, plus also our support services that are vital as well. So just to emphasise, you know, some of the support services there. And I absolutely echo your, your views around PTSD. It's, it's one of those silent areas of wellbeing that, that lots of people suffer from. So we're trying through the wellbeing ambassadors to make sure that we support our staff. But some of that is around actually recognising it for themselves in the first place and, and then providing the relevant support. So we are very focused and the occupational health team are excellent. They're outstanding at supporting members of, of the Fire and Rescue Service who are, are struggling from, like you say, PTSD is one of those things that's definitely prevalent within the Fire and Rescue Service.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Bill, you have your hand up for a question?
Oh, well, actually, it's been, Bob basically answered, asked the question about post-traumatic stress and it's been answered fully. But I have to say, I'm very impressed with the way the Fire and Rescue Service have stepped up to the plate these last few weeks.
Ben, do you want to come back on that?
Just to say, you know, the, the commitment from everyone across, you know, Warwickshire County Council as a whole. Then obviously the area where, where I work with the Fire and Rescue Service, the activity they're undertaking, their absolute desires, do the best they can for the vulnerable communities within Warwickshire. I, being new to Warwickshire Fire and Rescue Service, only being here for three months, I've been absolutely blown away by the absolute commitment of, of our, of our people in Warwickshire. So it's absolute pleasure to work, work here.
Thank you, Ben, and we're pleased that you've joined us. So that's the comments and answers from Ben as well. Can I ask if there's no objections to raise your hand? John, you've raised your hand. Are you objecting to the report or you've got another question?
I've got a question. Where, where did you come from, Ben? You've only been, you've, you're a new arrival. Where did you come from?
I am. I, I did 20 years in West Midlands Fire and Rescue Service, so.
All right.
Just across to Warwickshire.
Bit different with the number of retain, on-call firefighters, isn't it? We're a bit different from the on-call that you've got.
It's very different, but it's an amazing organisation, I've got to say. So it's, yeah, a real privilege to be here.
We're unique and we're brilliant, John. And on that note.
Unique perhaps.
I'm, on that note, I'm, I'm going to say that the report has been approved by all councillors and the rec, as, for the recommendations as set out. Can I now move on to item six? Am I on item six? No, item five. Annual Health, Safety and Wellbeing Report 2019-2020. And Sally, can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, good afternoon, Chair and councillors. So I'm Sally Brandrick and I'm, I'm now the Health, Safety and Wellbeing Technical Specialist, moved into a new role while writing this report. And for the last year, I was the Health, Safety and Wellbeing Manager. So I'll just give you a brief outline of the highlights of the report before I take questions. Is that okay?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, so a lot of positives over the last year. We had no health safety, health and safety executive intervention at all. We had nearly 50% reduction in our accident reports that we have to report to the HSE. So 50%, 50% reduction in significant accidents that we report. Lots of wellbeing initiatives over the last year, which you can probably see in the report. So lots of employee wellbeing initiatives, actions and support for staff. We implemented a new recognised health, health, safety and wellbeing auditing pro, process last year. And the benefits of the improved auditing process were that we've now introduced a measuring and rating formula. So we wanted to make sure that health and safety audits of any of Warwickshire County Council's services are, we can start to do a benchmark both against recognised rating and also against services audit to audit and against other services to see where they are. So we use a, a standard format for every single health and safety audit that's undertaken. So we use a standard format for every single health and safety audit that's undertaken for the services in Warwickshire. So we, within that new and improved auditing process, we've successfully audited designs, our design services, which is our highways and bridges services, waste management and construction and minor works and engineering audit. So they were quite and oh, sorry, and we recently finished children and families, so the whole of children and families audit. So you'll see some of the results in the in the report itself. And the feedback has been from service managers that they thought that the audits were much improved. And they like the fact that they can see where their actions are, where their gaps are, they can be supported in closing those gaps, if you like, and improving health and safety overall. And then they can see where they're improving audit to audit. So also, we're trying to do a lot more measuring of any of the work that the health, safety and wellbeing team is doing. So in, for example, display screen equipment assessments that the team do. So to see if people are sitting properly, even more importantly now, sitting properly with their computers and their laptops and everything. And the team will will support individuals on how best to work safely at their workstation. And we're asking for feedback on that. And has that improved? Have you seen your wrist pain go away? And do you feel that you're sitting more comfortably? And that's been really good as well to measure that. And then last, things like workplace inspections. Obviously, we're not physically doing those at the moment, but again, we're doing some rating to see if the inspection on workplaces and the physical work environment are being improved inspection to inspection. So that's improved. And so just wanted to quickly touch on employee, the Employee Assistance Programme, which is really key at the moment. So we, just before Covid, we offered the service to maintain schools. So all of our schools were with the employer. We had a great buy-in from schools. I think we've got a hundred and seven schools that signed up to that now. So and we managed to get it all set up just before schools closed. So that all school staff could access the counselling support and counselling website if they needed to. We also made our employee support available to two hundred and eighty social care providers. And we wouldn't normally do that, but because of Covid, and we were asked if we could try and offer it to them. So all of the staff that we commissioned to work in in our care homes and our domiciliary and our supported living. And we also made sure we had a robust bereavement and grief provision and support as well through our EAP. So so our priorities really are at the moment, I'll just touch on some of the Covid specifics. Because even though that wasn't in the original report, we added that in. And I think it's really important to say, we've done an awful lot on employee wellbeing through this this difficult time to make sure staff know where support is, know where they can access it. We're continually pulling together information on the internet or in newsletters or in briefings to say to staff, this is where you can access this information. Think about how you can try and homeschool your children. Think about taking a break and moving away and and doing all that kind of thing. So we've done an awful lot. We also included Covid occupational health referrals, so where now we're starting to look at reinstatement and recovery. So where staff might need to go back into the workplace. If if there's some uncertainty about their wellbeing and their physical health, we can do, we can do an occupational health referral. And we're also supporting very heavily at the moment in terms of reinstatement, risk assessments. So to make sure that the staff and the workplaces and the service activities are as safe as they can be before we start reinstating services and staff. So that's a quick summary. Hope that was quick enough. And have you got any questions, councillors?
Thank you, Sally. I'd just like to say, what, you know, I really enjoyed reading this report and the really positive outcomes that it's got within it. I also looked at the staff survey and the results. Wow, two thousand employees participated in that staff survey. So that's, I think that's the biggest outcome that we've ever had, ever. So certainly since I've joined Warwickshire County Council. So for me, that's a big bonus. We certainly do need to work with those employees who, in that staff survey, are still feeling, you know, things harder and difficult. And I think the occupational health, the wellbeing agenda all ties up in around that piece. I also wanted to thank whoever put the wellbeing and the mental health information on the internet, because that's really positive for staff, because I've actually had a look into it and I think it's really informative. And it gives you, you know, really good insight and information. So thank you to whoever, Sally, whether that's from your team or whoever's put that together. But that that's a really valuable piece of work. I'm going to open up to councillors and have I got any hands up? Can't see any hands. Anybody want to? Okay, okay, thank you, councillor Dervix. And then Bob Stevens. Thank you, councillor Dervix.
Thank you. Thank you for a very comprehensive report here. I've got a couple of questions. One is that you mentioned about the use of IT and making sure that people were using it in the safest possible way for themselves.
Yeah.
Have we got a sort of training information, you know, anything in place to help to make sure that people set up their computers at the right level, right distance and so on? So is there any sort of training for that? That's my first question.
Yes, we have. So any, any, any member of staff that is a is a is a display screen equipment user has to undertake an online, and anybody can do that from home, obviously, now or at any time. So it's an online training. So it's really easy to go through. And actually, you're you're undertaking the training while you're sitting in front of your IT ICT equipment. So it's great. So you can you can check yourself whether you're sitting at the right angle and your screen's the right height. So we have online training and then there's also an assessment that's part of that package where you can actually say, I I think I'm okay, but actually, you know, I don't think I've got the right screen or I don't think I've got the right chair or I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure if I need a bit of a bit of equipment, different equipment. So it gives all of that advice. In addition to that, we have an internet page where we have all of that information easily accessible. We have a little we have a document where it shows you how to how to quickly set up your chair and your equipment. And then we also, last year, produced a very quick video about doing exercises at your desk as well. So that's not actually about setting your equipment up. We've done all of that. We've got all that information on. But it's also about taking a break away from your equipment as well, and which is equally as important. And it tells you about little exercises you can do. So that's on the internet as well. So I'm I'm absolutely confident that we've got everything in place. And and since Covid as well, and since people have had to work at home, we've worked really hard in all of our information to try and give staff tips on what they can do, because not everybody's going to sit with a perfect setup. So we've also thought about remote working and homeworking as well. It's not perfect in all situations, but we've given staff as much information as we can in terms of, you know, try and try and raise your screen and work on an ironing board if you need a bit of height and that type of thing. So a bit of a bit of outside thinking and innovation for getting people to work safely. Does that, does that answer?
That does answer my question. It's it's good to hear that you're thinking out of the box as well about things like exercise, you know, going to make a cup of coffee and drinking it doesn't really count.
No, exactly.
Your exercise. So thank you for that. My other question is, is on page forty six about violence involving pupils.
Yes.
You know, obviously, this is quite a serious escalation. Even when you take into account the comments there, that it's on, largely caused by a very small number of pupils. What support are we giving to those staff that are involved in that? And what actions are we taking to try and prevent it?
Okay.
Very difficult subject.
Yes, it is a very difficult subject. And we, we, as you, as you can see in the, in the information, it gives a bit of context around that. It is largely just a small number of schools and is largely one or two pupils. And and I think just to expand on that firstly, and I will come back to you, the question you've asked. It's, I think, I think schools and staff very much always try to report all of the incidents from, even if it's one pupil. So you you will see an expanse of reports come through for for incidents for one pupil. And I think there's a reason for that. And it's so that the staff can feel that it's being reported and it's being looked into. But also, so that it is kind of from the school's perspective, it's it's demonstrating that school needs some input from colleagues and partners on what to do about that child and what to do about that pupil. So we encourage all that reporting. In terms of support, it's a difficult, it's a difficult one from a health, safety and wellbeing point of view, because obviously we recognise that, you know, that's distressing for distressing for staff. And, you know, they're not, I won't say insignificant, they're not serious injuries, you know. But any small injury, whether it's a scratch or a small hit or a bite, it, you know, staff shouldn't be exposed to that, of course. So so when the accidents come through, the team will have a look at them and they'll look at what the head teacher has put in terms of what's been done, in terms of support. And if if it says things such as, you know, we are discussing this pupil, you know, we have the educational psychologist involved. And we have the parents involved and we have other, they have other partners in the school involved. We know that they're discussing it. We always ask what what support has been given to staff. And if they say we're discussing it with staff and we've asked the staff, you know, what we can do with this pupil. It's quite difficult for schools, isn't it? Because you've got this balance between trying not to exclude for temporary time or for permanent exclusion, and yet trying to support staff and, you know, not expose staff to, you know, to this, to this type of incident. But I think it's it's hard because we we kind of got, we we talked to the unions, obviously, at the union meetings. We say, what else can we do? And and they've agreed to work with schools and have this information with the schools that are involved and see what else can be done. And I think it's really just making sure that the support is in place for the the staff, the head teacher is taking it seriously and talking to the staff and supporting them. And then the 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 key people, the key partners involved in talking about this pupil's behaviour is then being discussed in terms of what what can we do? So does that answer your question?
Yeah, it is something that is very concerning, because I'm on the teachers' consultative panel as well. And that it's been raised there and that there are definitely concerns about specific schools, for instance. And I I think that we really need to make sure that our health and safety considerations are added into the mix there, and that we are part of the conversations. You know, it, you mentioned that some of these injuries are are minor, but they're cumulative. They are. It's the effect that they have on staff when they see it happening around them. Particularly when they they rightly or wrongly perceive that not enough is being done. Yeah, and you know, I I think we, it is really incumbent on us to make sure that we give as much support, including the unions, including the other officers, you know, in education and so on, to to make sure that 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 the health and safety is part of the the whole mix of trying to solve the problems with sometimes very few pupils involved.
I think I should have added as well, and it's probably important to say that if if I think we can recognise that if you're involved with schools, there's a at least two of those schools that are have been, that are schools of concern or have been schools of concern. And that this, this, these type of incidents also get discussed at the Schools of Concerns meeting as well. So there's and there's a whole education and learning team and staff that are working to support these schools. So it's not an excuse because this school is, but it, but it's, you know, the school has been under some pressure and duress and has been of some concern generally about the leadership. And and I think, you know, it's quite interesting that you see a couple of those schools where a number of these incidents are. So it's definitely discussed in different arenas. And and staff are supported and it is discussed with head teachers, et cetera. It's it's just, it's just trying to work out what more support you can. I think it's just talking to the staff and making sure staff are supported. And we do ask the questions when these incidents come through of what of what is happening. And if we're not, if we're not happy, if we're not satisfied with what's been put on an accident report, one of the the team that's looking at the accident report, these types of incidents, they will ring the school up. They will ring the head teacher up and and say, you know, what support is being given? You know, how how much is is being done? So.
Sally, would it be, would it, councillor Dervix, would it be helpful if 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 we set up a meeting or a briefing note for around this piece for you, so that you have the assurance that work is being done? Or are you satisfied with the response?
I'm satisfied with the response that we are involved in that process and that we are taking an active part in it, not just sort of a monitoring role. And I I think I've got that reassurance from Sally.
Okay, thank you, councillor Dervix. Thank you, Sally, for your comprehensive response. Bob, did you want to come in?
I will come in, but most of what I was going to ask has already been answered. It's all to do with homeworking. And what ultimately, as employers, is our responsibility to the staff who work at home, either because they have to or because they want to. If they had an accident, tripped over their wiring or something.
Oh, that's a very good question, councillor. That's a very good question. It's it's a slight anomaly, actually, because pre-Covid, the only people that we would have responsible responsibility for in there, working at home were staff who have a contract to say that they are homeworking. So very, very, I don't, not even sure we've got any at this moment in time. A couple of social care staff, I think we had, who who had written into their contract that they were homeworking. So their manager would make sure that they discuss with them, you know, have you got a safe working environment? We don't legally have any responsibility for somebody's home environment, apart from going back to the display screen equipment regulations, which councillor Dervix was talking about earlier, in terms of trying to make sure we're giving as much information and equipment and support and advice about working on your display screen equipment. Other than that, we don't have a legal responsibility. Covid, Covid has thrown us up with these all different situations. So but it stands legally that we don't actually have any legal responsibility for people working at home. What we, what we do have is obviously, you know, a duty of care to make sure.
Duty of care, yeah.
Yeah, to make sure that staff are comfortably working at home and that they they are able to. So we're having those conversations now. This is, I think this is where our advice and information is coming forward, that, you know, how can you manage your home life and work life? We're trying to do as much as we can to 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 offer that to to employees and how to balance their working and their children and their working in their home environment.
Do we have an advisory leaflet to give them all?
Sorry, just to come in on that piece, we had a, we have a working from home policy that we approved not so long ago. And I can't remember the dates because I'm in Covid, Dan. But Sarah or legal colleagues, if you're on, I know you're on call, if you could jog my memory. And maybe we could review that policy to have this piece included.
Chair, yes, I am on the call. Sarah Spree. So yes, we have been reviewing a number of our policies and approaches in light of Covid. Because obviously, a vast number, vast majority of our staff are actually working remotely and from home. And so we will have another look at that. But we, that will be in support of the information, I think, that's already available to staff on the internet, where we try to encourage people to be mindful of their own working environments. And we've also offered staff a financial contribution of a hundred pounds towards any additional equipment that they may need to support that homeworking environment. So we are continually having a look at that and supporting, trying to support staff. So we are continually having a look at that and supporting, trying to support staff and updating our guidance as we go.
Thank you for that, Sarah. Bob, does that answer your question? You can just nod.
This mute keeps switching on, see?
Okay, Sally, thank you. If there are no further questions, can I move the report and the recommendations set out in Agenda item five? No hand showing, so I'm going to take that as approved. Many thanks, Sally. Okay, if we move on to Agenda item six, Administration Activity and Performance Report. Liz Firmstone, are you with us?
I'm here. Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon councillors.
Thank you, Liz. If you'd like to introduce the report and yourself, that'd be lovely.
Yeah, certainly. So I'm Liz Firmstone and I'm the finance manager with the overarching responsibility for the pensions administration function. So that team is responsible for managing relationships with our members of the local government pension scheme, the nearly 200 employers who are members of the scheme and for, obviously for paying benefits to our pensioners. We introduced this activity update report for the pensions admin team a couple of meetings ago. So this is the latest in some information, just to let you know what's been going on within the team and the progress that they're making. And I'll just run through some of the headlines. And last year, we carried out a governance review of the service to see where we might be able to improve the way the team is operating and the way that it's being managed. We came up with 54 individual actions and we're making really positive progress with those. We've now completed 36, it says 34 in the report, but actually since the report was written, we've completed another two. So we've completed 36 of those 54 actions. We're expecting another four to be finished by early July. And actually, some of those that are outstanding, are outstanding because they aren't due yet. So things like the annual and lifetime allowance notifications that we send out to certain members, that work isn't due until October. So overall, we're making really good progress with that. We've had a couple of internal audits take place in the last couple, in the last two years and we're waiting for those reports to be formalised and finalised, at which point we'll share the final versions with the committee. And we are, we've seen the draft reports and we're putting actions in place to deal with recommendations from those. I'd like to say a little bit about workloads. You'll see from the graph in section 4.1 of this report, the general trend of outstanding work going down. Even while people have been working from home, they've been making some really good inroads to reducing outstanding queries, which obviously all helps to improve our service to members. And in fact, we had outstanding queries of about 5,000 in total at the end of January. Between the end of January and the end of May, the team has managed to halve that to around 2,500. So given that for two of those four months, everybody was working from home, that's, you know, really, really impressive progress. So we're very pleased about that. Those queries include things like making sure that new starters are joining the scheme in a timely manner, that their details are being changed when necessary, and dealing with queries relating to employer data. Also, while they've been in lockdown, they've been dealing with making sure that the indexation increases to pensions are all implemented in a timely fashion. That all was completed on time. The next job is making sure that we get all of the information from our employers for year end, so that we can issue annual benefit statements to all of our members. And we've had information back from all but a handful of our employers who we're chasing at the moment. So the next stage there is just to deal with any queries that are popping out of that information that our employers have supplied. Statements to deferred members have actually already been issued, which is well in advance of the statutory deadline. So that's all good news as well. Chris Norton earlier on the agenda mentioned the fact that we've now managed to recruit to our pensions admin manager post. Dicky Jenks joins us on the 6th of July. That's been quite a difficult post to fill actually. Pension specialists are quite a rare breed. So we've had an interim Andrew Marston in doing a great job there, but it's good to have that post filled now on a permanent basis from the summer. Key performance indicators, we've included some information in the report about our performance in 2019-20. Those are our year end results. The figures for 2019-20, they kind of aggregate as we go through the year. And at the start of the year, we had quite a lot of vacancies in the team. We went through a complete service redesign and we didn't have a full complement of staff at the start of the year. So improvements have gradually been going on as we've made it through the year and those numbers have been creeping up. So if you were to take a snapshot in time now of our performance, it would be significantly better than where it was at the start of the year. One of the things that we've been looking at is whether our key performance indicators are the right set. And we've done some work looking at what the industry standards are here and we would like to make some changes to those. And there's a new set of indicators that are set out in Appendix Two. So one of the things we would like to seek approval for from the committee is to some changes to those indicators and approval to the set that's now set out before you in Appendix Two. The final point I was just going to mention was on the section on breaches. On the face of it, it looks like we have a high number of breaches. The vast majority of them, any time an employer submits its data not on time and misses its deadlines, then we have to record that as breach. That doesn't mean that we don't get the data. Invariably, we do get the late data, but we don't always get it on time. If we have repeat offenders, as it were, who are continually late or who miss the deadline by a significant period of time, then we escalate those and they go from green breaches to amber breaches. And we make sure that we follow up individually with those employers to try and establish whether there's any particular problem that we can help them with and whether there's any additional action that we need to take. One of the things, and we're keeping a very close eye on that, Chris was talking about the impact of COVID earlier on. And one of the things we're keeping an eye on is whether that is having any impact on our employers' ability to meet their obligations under the scheme. So we're working very closely with them on that. The other thing just to mention is we are about to embark on a project called iConnect, which is a way that we can automate the submission of employer data. So we basically suck the employer's data straight out of their payroll system into our pension system, which means that the data, we automatically get that information on time. And there are all sorts of validation checks in that process, which means that if employers' information isn't correct, then it gets pushed back to them to resolve the queries, which is kind of putting responsibility for the data quality in the right place. And obviously, data quality is really important because if we're giving people quotes for their pensions and that kind of thing, then we need to make sure we're basing that on accurate information. So we're hoping to start rolling that out in the autumn. It'll go out in three or four phases and should make a really good difference to both data quality and the timeliness of the information that we get in about all of our scheme members. Those were the headlines that I was going to just pick out. So if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thanks, Liz. First of all, I'd like to place my thanks to all the staff in the team for reducing the numbers from such a high volume to half. Can't be easy whilst in one lockdown, two, you know, unknown times. And thirdly, if they've never worked from home, adjusting to a new way of working. So a big, big thank you from me.
Pass that on.
That was a really comprehensive and detailed narrative that you've just given. And the report itself is a really comprehensive report. I'm just looking at councillors to see if there's any questions from anyone. Can't see any questions. Oh, Bob's just snuck in there. Bob, do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, I was just waiting to see what else I'm going to ask. KPIs. I personally don't agree with 100% KPI anyway, because you'll never get 100%. I'd rather went for 90 something, which is achievable. You seem to have missed that, missed most of them. Some of them very significantly, that first one of retirement lump sums is frightening. One wonders how often the KPIs are they adjusted? And do they need to be revisited? Because the fact you're missing them indicates that perhaps things are not all over as Rosie.
So the 100% target is actually the statutory target. We, as you say, the likelihood of being able to hit 100% every time is nigh on impossible. But that's why the target is there is 100%. That first one that you pick out, retirement lump sums paid within 30 days of retirement, is a really tricky one because we can't pay the lump sum until we've had notification from the employer that somebody has retired. And usually, they won't send us that notification until the person has actually left. So it's a bit unrealistic because they are waiting until that person has received their final salary payment before they contact us to tell us that the person's retired. And that's why that particular KPI is so low. So that, it's a bit of a tricky one, that one. Section nine of the report is the performance for 2019-20. And as I say, we had quite a lot of vacant posts and we went through the team restructure and we have much more capacity within the team to be able to meet those KPIs than we did at the start of the year. And the numbers have been, if you were to take a snapshot at the start of the year compared with the end of the year, you would find that the percentages were much higher now than they were at the beginning of April 2019. Appendix Two is, sets out what we would like to use as the KPIs for April 2020 onwards. And you'll see from that that actually our internal target, we think we could achieve 90% of those, sorry, 95% of the targets set out in that appendix within, well, 10 days for the majority of them. Other target numbers of days in other cases.
They seem more realistic, don't they, Liz?
They are. And then, so we would be looking at achieving, for example, letter dealing with transferring, in quotes, that first KPI, we would look to achieve 90% of that within 10, deliver 90% of those within 10 days, but to achieve, to have achieved the other 5% within a two-month window. So we've got the kind of the two levels, if you like, which I think are more realistic and more achievable. But still, you know, still stretched targets.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the big thing is they've got to be achievable, even if they're stretched.
Yeah.
I think, Bob, just to reassure you as well, the fact that we've got additional staff, which we, as Liz has mentioned, we didn't have full FTE within the team, didn't help. But now that the capacity is nearly there, I'd say, hopefully we'll start hitting these targets. I know Andy wants to come in, Andy Felton.
Yeah, just supporting Liz's comments really. I mean, the two ones are particularly poor. The first one and the 69% on the transfers paid within 10 days. And obviously, the trend in performance has been significantly improved up to 89% anyway with that performance indicator. So the investment in the recovery plan has worked quite well there. And the extra capacity, I would hope, would start to push some of these if we keep these measures up a little bit higher. And as Liz says, the first one, we're very much reliant on other people. Actually, our processing of those payments within 10 days of getting the notifications, the second indicator, shows significantly good performance internally. So whether we can do work with employers to try and get information at an earlier stage to allow us to hit that target, if we don't move to the other indicators, would be something we'd perhaps look at to try and improve things. But it's, yeah, there is some room for improvement on some of these areas. But I sort of support what Liz is saying in terms of something more realistic around Appendix Two.
Thank you, Andy. John, do you want to come in? You're on mute, John.
Yeah, thanks. I think Andy may have covered a bit of it, which was the, I'd noticed the 69% as well. It seems to me that there are two sorts of KPI, one of which is the overall system KPI, which is from, if you like, the employee through to payment of money, which includes, say, the school or the academy and us. And that would be the retirement lump sum stuff, because you're saying you have to get the paperwork in. But there are the other ones, which again, Andy mentioned, which are the ones where it is from receipt of paperwork. And that's where we should be targeting 100%. And as I say, the 69, was that 69.5%, was that lack of staff?
Yes, it was. So that's basically the cumulative number of transfers paid within 10 days for the whole year. And the comment in the right-hand side shows how much that's, if you were just taking a snapshot of the last four months, actually, that performance had improved up to nearly 90% since we managed to increase the number of staff that we have in there dealing with those issues. So yes, a lot of that 69%, 69.5% was just due to capacity issues, which we are hoping that we've now addressed.
You see, we managed to get 99, nearly 99%, which is probably reasonable on retirement sums. But then, as you say, it went down to 85, 95, 88. We should be up in the high 90s if it's from receipt of paperwork. Are you confident you'll do that next year?
Yeah, we are. And some of this, some of the differentials between the percentages in the 2019-20 performance, I think are due to where we have had to prioritise the staffing. So making sure that we are paying retirement lump sums as quickly as we can, as soon as we know about them. So that second indicator, the 98.56%, we prioritise that because we know that people need to receive their lump sum as soon as we know that they've retired. Some of the others, so the transfers, the 69.48%, nobody is going to lose out financially if we don't do that quite as quickly as the retirement lump sums, for example. So it's about what criteria do we use? At the point at which we had limited capacity, where do we want to prioritise our efforts? And making sure that the efforts went into those areas where people aren't going to be financially disadvantaged. You know, that was the priority, getting payments out, whereas transfers doesn't actually affect the money that we're paying out to people. So that was a lower priority at that point in time. Obviously, moving forwards, now that we've got the staff in place, we want to achieve the, you know, the 95% and the 100% across the board.
Right.
Okay, so thank you for that, Liz. You got a bit of a grilling, I'm afraid. But the recommendation, councillors, is that the report is, that we note the report and the approval, approve the adoption of the amended key performance indicators set out in Appendix Two, which we've just discussed. If there are no show of hands, then I'll accept that the report has been approved. No shows and therefore the recommendations have been endorsed and accepted by councillors. Can we, thank you, Liz. And we'll move on to item seven. Item seven being admissions and termination policy. Neil Buxton, over to you, if you could introduce yourself, please, and the report. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, councillors. Neil Buxton, Technical Specialist for Warrageham Pension Fund. The first report is an amendment to the admissions and terminations policy. This is due to amending regulations that were issued by the government in March, which allow funds discretion as to how they deal with exit credits. An exit credit for a scheme employer will arise when they leave the fund. And following assessment by the funds actuary, they will determine whether there is an amount of money due to that employer is exiting. So 5.5 sets out a brief supporting information about what, how we're dealing with this. And Appendix One, section six, set out the amendment that we're asking you to approve in the admissions and terminations policy. Once the committee has approved this, the policy will be made available to our employers and prospective employers on the fund website. Any questions?
Okay, over to you, councillors. Anybody wish to ask a question? Oh, I think they're all happy with this one, Neil. In which case, oh, no, Bill's coming, just as I was about to say something. So Bill, would you like to ask a question?
I don't think we have, I don't think we have much choice, do we?
No, probably not.
So I would recommend that we accept it.
Excellent. As there's no show of hands, then we'll accept the recommendation and that the committee approves the amended admissions and termination policy. Thank you, Neil. That was very short and sweet. But I believe you're going to be doing the next report as well, item eight, which is... Item eight, which is the administration strategy. If you can talk us through that one, that'd be lovely. Thank you.
The committee actually approved the draft administration strategy at their March meeting. And then we went out to employers for any comments. Now, the report says that we hadn't received any comments, but shortly after drafting, we did receive one comment from an academy, which was around questions about third-party payroll providers. And we were able to satisfy their concerns on that. Since this report and the administration strategy has been drafted, and as Liz referred to, there have been some amendments to the KPIs put forward by the admin team. And we propose to feed those into this strategy as soon as, well, now they've been approved by the committee. So those amendments will go in there. So we are seeking your approval for this administration strategy. And again, once it has been approved, we'll put it on the website, available for employers.
Okay. Andy Felton, you'd like to come in on this?
Councillor Dervix has got his hand up first, manually.
Sorry, sorry.
That's okay. It's the IT. We'll get it sorted one day. Just a point, that the strategy at Appendix A didn't appear on my papers. There is no appendix. So when this is done, could this strategy come back to us electronically? So that we'd see what it is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Andy, do you want to come in?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry about that. I didn't look up.
No, it's okay. It's fine. Just help. Yeah, I suppose it's just quite important to highlight that there's changes within this that give us a little bit more strength to have conversations with employers that maybe are not following the rules that we need them to follow. And if they don't follow them, there are consequences now, which we haven't necessarily had in the past or been able to enforce. So it just gives us a bit more power to get on top of some of the more tardier employers, where we don't get information quickly enough. And iConnect will also help with that going forward, and conscious people know about. And we are starting to progress that now as well. But it's just a point worth making.
Just to ask, are councillors aware of iConnect? I'm looking at the blank faces.
It basically makes the link with our employer organisations more electronic. So they'd be able to send the information through to us in a much cleaner form, basically, and faster. But we've got to implement it with them first across the next year.
I think, as Liz referred to as well, it is, as Andy was saying, it's a portal, basically. But if the information is incorrect, it bounces it straight back to the employer and seeks them to correct that information before submission as well.
Okay. Thank you, Neil. If there are no further questions and hands up, and there are no hands up at the moment, so therefore, I'm taking it that the recommendation for approval of the administration strategy at Appendix X is approved. Yes, lovely. Therefore, the time now is 15:10, according to my computer. I declare the meeting closed. The next meeting is on the 14th of September. And thank you very, very much, everybody, for joining us. I think I've got a couple of hands up from Nicola. Are you joining us, Nicola?
I was. Just chair to say that we need to take the minutes of last meeting and approve them.
Okay, so, sorry, I thought I'd done that bit. In my head, I obviously have. So just to ask everybody, do you agree the meetings that were circulated, I think, earlier today, or let me just check when they were sent with you all? Have you all seen the minutes? They were sent to you on Friday. If you all agree those minutes, can I sign and agree? Lovely. I'm getting some nods. Nicola, are you happy with that?
That's fine. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, in which case, thank you, everybody, for joining us. I believe we're still being recorded. So thank you to all the officers for all your hard work and continuing commitment to delivering our services and our work. And thank you all again for joining us and talking.